That can be correct.
Call the order of the city council meeting for the city of East Grand Forks for July 21st, 2020 is now five o'clock. Would City Clerk please go roll?
Mayor Steve Gander, Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel, Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does term call, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an open forum. We actually have a gentleman on, is it Kenyon?
Kenyon.
Kenyon, okay. If you want to state your name and your address for record, please.
Um, yes, Kenyon Leopard and 806, um, half Third Avenue Northeast. Um, I've, uh, I've seen a lot of, uh, well, for starters, I've seen a lot of police activity in the neighborhood lately, and they've been out and about, and they have not been wearing any sort of masks. And I've also noticed that in the last few weeks, if you follow the COVID, um, the COVID epidemic ma- I mean, the COVID epidemic chart maps in, uh, the Polk County, um, well, I, I sound kind of like a buncan, but I'm just very nervous. I don't do much public speaking. Um, I, it, it's shown that there's been an outbreak of a few thousand in the last few weeks around here in Polk County. And I feel like if there's something the city of East Grand Forks can do to enforce that city officials wear masks, then we should do it. Or at the very least, that we lean on them a little bit more heavily to convince them, or at least try to convince them to wear masks, then we should do it because there hasn't been a global pandemic this big since the influenza outbreak of 1918. And right now, it's not a political statement, it's about lives. And I, I mean, I don't know about the rest of my time, but I'd just like to yield whatever time I have. That's all I have to say. And I'd just like you to strongly consider that.
Mr. Murphy, do you have anything?
Thanks.
Well, first thing I'll say is, uh, no, you did, you did fine, Kenyon, you know, I don't, you didn't, most people are nervous when they come on here for the first time. So no, you, you, uh, you, uh, you didn't do, uh, you didn't do bad at all, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much for hearing me out.
Yeah. Um, as far as the, the requirements for, for masks, um, as far as the, the city requirements that, that we're under is, um, if we're going into somebody's home, uh, like, for example, if they're doing, uh, like a building inspection or those type of things, um, we do, we do require them to, uh, wear masks. However, if they are out and about and can safely social distance, um, the way the, the policy reads now is that is a personal issue whether they want to, um, wear that or not. Um, at this point, we haven't, uh, taken a look to get at any.
Well, it's, I mean, it's more that I've seen them, like, like I've seen clusters of police colors with their sirens blasting, and I've seen officers out arresting people, and they haven't been wearing masks. And I know that obviously, social distancing can't be observed when you're arresting an individual. And through that, I have to infer that social distancing wasn't ver- wasn't observed throughout the rest of the process, and social distancing can't be observed or isn't observed in the jailing process in the Polk County Jail.
I guess if I, more specifically to the police, I know, um, Chief Headlander, could you, um, maybe address some of those, like, that process?
Yeah, as far as the Polk County Jail goes, we have zero control over that. Uh, they actually are requiring our, our officers to wear masks when they bring a person to the jail. So we are absolutely wearing them when we go to the jail, because they won't allow our officers into the jail without wearing masks. In most cases, we are. Uh, beyond that, we need masks available for all of our officers. Uh, we've highly recommended that they wear them, especially on, uh, calls where, where we believe they may have a, a chance of encountering someone that's COVID positive, but at this point in time, we haven't mandated it. Uh, the officer's jobs can be very difficult, and it can go from a situation where they are properly social distancing to a situation where it becomes more active, more hands-on very quickly, as, as I'm sure you can understand.
I do, and I understand.
Sorry, apologies.
Uh, no, I, I apologize for cutting you off. But I mean, I, I know the, especially with the active investigation that you have going on with the extremely heinous crime that happened recently, I, I understand the, the crisis that you have going on, and I can appreciate the pressure, the pressure that your officers, that your officers are under on a daily basis. So it's very hard to observe everything that's happening.
Sure. Absolutely understand your concerns, you know, about COVID-19. It's obviously something that we all need to be aware of and, and think about. And, uh, we're certainly open to discussion of, of having our officers and other city staff wear masks more frequently. So, but certainly something we can discuss in house here, and then I'll discuss it with Mr. Murphy as well.
All right. Well, thank you very much for hearing me out, and I hope you have a very fruitful meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your input. Yep.
Okay, move on to approval minutes for July 7th regular meeting and July 14th work session, please. Move by Riappell.
Second.
Second by Helms. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion is carried. Uh, scheduled bedletting's none, scheduled public hearings none. Consent agenda, items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items be polled from a consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. So we have approval on three through six. So you may have a motion of three through six, please. Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Vedder. So any questions or discussion? Mr. Helms?
I just have one on three. Is, is that something they've done every, all the time, or is this a new?
This will be, um, they have done this ride for eight years. This will be the third year that they've been on the greenway.
On this trail?
Yes.
Okay. No, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Roll call, please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledge your receipt of reports officers boards and commissions. Number seven regular meeting minutes of water, light, power, and building commission for July 1st, 2020. Communication, there's none. Old business, there's none. New business, consider adopting resolution number 20 dash 07 dash 46, supporting the proposed traffic signal replacement and ADA work at the intersections of Second and Fourth Street Northwest on Demers Avenue and commit to paying 50% of the traffic signal cost for this project. Move. Move by Riappell.
I'll second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call, please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number nine, consider adopting resolution number 20 dash 07 dash 47, showing support for the Laffey Park Improvement Application for the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Grant Funding and Local Match Commitment of 25% of the project to include. Move. Move by Helms.
But we'll also need to know, um, what, because there's a couple different options. So we would need to know what options you guys would like to include.
Oh, could you just label them as one, two, or three?
Does that make sense to you?
Yep, that'd be just fine.
One start at the bottom or the top?
One at the top.
Good, better, best.
Are you going to explain which ones they are, please?
I'd be happy to if I can, if that was appropriate. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, uh, council members. I guess I'd start with apologizing that this information didn't get to you a little sooner so we could have more time for you all to think about it. Um, we took feedback from the work session last week and, and got back together with Mr. Emery and kind of tried to readjust a little bit, maybe scale down the size of the parking lot from the master plan that we had last year to try to make it a little bit more affordable, um, for us and for the grant application. So I put together, Mr. Emery put together an estimate for one boat ramp and the gravel parking lot. That's basically what's pictured here in front of you, um, to Mr. Demers' kind of request last, last week at the work session. Uh, and that price is the $566,000. Uh, the second portion of the grant that I hope you'll support is connecting people to the outdoors. That's part of the Joint Powers Board work that we're doing to try to engage people along the river corridor, all the way from Thiefera Falls to, to East Grand Forks and everything in between along the Red Lake River. So other communities along the, the corridor have already committed support to that piece of it. So I hope that you all will as well. Um, and then we kind of get into maybe some of the options. Uh, after I sent this all out to you today, I sent it with the recommendation that that first one be what we recommend for approval. And the reason I did that is that if we include the overlay on First Street, that we'd be over the 40% funding criteria. And now you'll see some numbers updated in front of you. Ms. Anderson called after I sent this to you and said, what if we look at two boat ramps instead of just one? Does that change our percentage? So that's what I put in front of you now. Uh, we're really close. You, the second option I gave you is two boat ramps and the connecting people to the outdoors option. And you can see that, that what that total is, 25% of it being roads and parking lots. We have to be at 40% or under to qualify. So if we did the third option, which would be two boat ramps with gravel parking lot, concrete curb and gutter, as it's pictured here in the, in the picture I gave you, and include the First Street Northeast Mill and Overlay, as we discussed last week at the work session, the total project amount would be 943,202. Uh, and the local match portion would be 233,397. And our, so that, the percentage would be right at 39%, essentially. So we'd be right under the criteria to qualify for that. If you, that's something you're considering as, as an option, or if you would consider as an option, I think it'd be great for us, um, because it could help us address the need for the Mill and Overlay on First Street Northeast, that if we don't apply for that in grant funding, and we try to figure out how to do it locally, um, it's gonna end, it could potentially cost the city an extra $150,000. Rather than having a local match of 233,000, we would have a local match of Project One at 145,000, and then still have to locally find money to pay another 225 to Mill and Overlay that street. So, uh, we'd be committing to a larger local match by going with the third option, the last one listed. But again, reminding, reminding all of you, we'd be spreading that out over 2022, 23. And even if we had to, we could stretch some of that work into 2024, because the grant period would expire June 30th of '24. So there's a couple different options here. Um, when I sent it to you all this morning, I suggested option one. Uh, after talking with Carla, a little more length and, and seeing how these numbers could work out for us, I really do think that option three would be a good option to apply for because it gives us more bang for our buck, so to speak, locally, if we're comfortable with that kind of money.
Do you understand? Still want to make a motion, Dale?
Um, no, I'll withdraw it right at the moment. But I want to, I, I suppose we have to get the motion first.
Yeah, I'd like to get a motion first, and we'll have further discussion, please. We know which ones they are now, so we can.
I'll move for option three.
Option three on the table. Is anyone going to second that motion? No, he's, he's not seconding, are you?
I did, I seconded.
Oh, I, I didn't hear, I'm sorry. Mr. Demers, second for discussion. Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, quick question, um, about the, the roads and connections. Is there any difference in priority for rehabbing roads versus new roads and new connections? I just, I'm trying to figure out what that portion, if we did it this way, if all of a sudden you, there's a difference between just rehabbing, I mean, you could follow that line, and we could redo all the streets in town if we wanted to, get people to come. Um, I just want to know, I would imagine in their mind, they may be thinking new connections. You know, it's, we're putting a new boat ramp somewhere, there's nothing, and the road that it takes, or the bike trail that it takes to get there. Is there any stipulation for that? Because I, I, I think it's a, it's a good motion, um, if we don't box ourselves in by doing too much. Do you have any idea?
Well, I, I can't, I don't know if I can totally answer your question to whether or not it gets priority for new construction versus re- reconstruction or rehabilitation. I can say that in the criteria, um, one of the criteria, they, they use a scoring ranking in how they score these. And one of the criteria for 15, worth 15 points, is that the project is a critical accu- acquisition or critical rehabilitation and repair of a park facility or structure. So I, I would say we would qualify under that with the regional impact that this boat access and this park potentially has for our community. I think in a grant application, we could sure swing it using some numbers of people that currently use it versus what we think potential could be to call that critical. Um, I can't say whether they place that on a higher priority or not, but it is, I think they would check that box as far as scoring is concerned.
Okay, thank you. And then Ms. Anderson, it looked like there was 80-some thousand dollars that we had kind of put aside for this into capital last year. Is that correct?
I, I believe so. I know we talked about that in the past, and we would be able to do this in our future budgeting because this, like Rita had mentioned, we could do it over three years. Um, this would be considered infrastructure and part of it, so there's other funds that we could also use. Uh, we could, example, use TIF dollars if we wanted for infrastructure. There are some other funds available, possibly we could use a state aid maintenance if there's some of those dollars left. So I know when we met last time, we made sure we didn't use all those maintenance dollars, and Steve Emery could speak about that, too. So there are ways we could find money, we could also budget for it in those three years that we talked about.
But would I be correct in saying that we'd have to come up with about $160,000 more than what we have over three years or over two years?
Well, technically, we didn't put the money aside because the grant wasn't actually approved. So we actually haven't set aside those dollars. And typically, when we do a budget that's in the general fund, it doesn't roll from year to year. So we would actually plan in our general fund if that's where we decided to pay for it, for the two or three years that we wanted to pay it over.
So we'd have, we'd be looking at the full 240,000 for three years, so $80,000 a year?
$80,000 a year.
If we decide to go with the general fund, otherwise we could budget it out of our state aid maintenance dollars, which would not be part of the levy system. Or we also have, um, some other funds that we could look at possibly doing.
Okay. Um, the last question I had is, if we were to just go with like the single, or two questions, the single boat ramp, the cheapest one, would we be able to, instead of, I thought the line items had like a removal of the other one and building of the other, could you keep the other one while we're doing the construction, build the new one, and leave the other one until we build a second one?
Base two.
Instead, and save the 10,000 removal or whatever, and, and keep that other one active? So you, you'd have one and a half, maybe?
Yep. Uh, yeah, actually, Mr. Emery and I discussed that today as an option. Uh, we certainly could. We'd, we listed it as removal and replace, just for the sake of the pricing today, not knowing if you guys had any opinion one way or another of that. But that's certainly, the way it's pictured, we could certainly could put the new ramp in to the south of the current one first, so we don't lose river access hypothetically. And then in a future project, or the next year even, if we applied for both, you know, one could go in one construction season, the next one could go in the, a second, or even if they could fit them both in in one year. I, but you'd love to be able, I might personally, I'd love to be able to see river access remain through the construction process so that we don't need to lose, um, lose that amenity for the community, being it's the only one we have in East Grand Forks.
And then the last thing is, would there be any benefit to changing the, the geometry of those, uh, access to allow for our boat, our dock to fit between them, so that you would have kind of access from either ramp?
Certainly could, again. Uh, if you recall, the master plan we had in front of you even last week.
I thought that.
It had that between the two. Um, when Steve and I started putting this together, we started it with, uh, just looking at updating one ramp. And part of this, it has to become ADA, it has to remain or become ADA accessible when we do it. So if we're only going to do the first ramp we had, I looked at the, where the current dock sits, we'd have to put a concrete access path to that in order to qualify with the project. And I said to myself, if that's all we're going to do, and then five years down the road, we're going to try to get another boat ramp at that time, then we could worry about how that access path works and where the dock sits at that time. And then through the day today, we started adjusting. So sorry, I'm giving you a long answer.
Yeah, no, it's.
Ultimately, our original master plan has that. Uh, yesterday, the first draft I got from Mr. Emery in the Woodseth office, it had the current one showing and another one shaded in. I thought that would be confusing to people looking at it to see two, so we just, we deleted it out of this one in an attempt to not confuse anybody.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Helms?
Yeah. Um, I'm a little concerned if we, if we really need two boat ramps down there, first of all. I mean, I've seen a lot of traffic down there, but I don't know if I've really seen a lot of backed up boats, you know, loading and unloading. Um, and I'd be a little concerned about this piece of land between the two, that, that wouldn't maybe wash away a little bit every year. And, and the other thing, um, Mr. Emery, maybe you can help me on this one. Um, you sent me the information for the one boat ramp on the cost?
Yep.
So on this single boat ramp, on the, on the very top one here, the pricing you got here, um, how did we get so high on that project versus how much that boat ramp is going to cost there? Um, I'm guessing that, you know, you, you've got curb and gutter in there, but I can't believe there could be that much curb and gutter down there and concrete, or I mean, gravel. You know, the, for your one boat ramp and gravel parking lot, you got project at $566,000. And then you got, then you got the single boat ramp, it's going to cost 125,000. So I'm a little confused on.
Well, and it, and again, what we figured is, I mean, we do have some, uh, some curb and gutter in there, some curb and gutter islands, um, you know, where, where we'd be able to put some trees, some plantings, just so it's not all a hard surface down there. But what we figured, too, is, um, you know, not knowing really what's down there for, you know, gravel base section right now, we basically figured that we would core out basically that entire parking lot and put in a gravel, uh, you know, basically a new gravel section. And I had figured about, you know, about 12 inches of gravel right now, so, um.
This, this is kind of like, this, this 566 is kind of like what I asked you for here on the, on the boat ramp. Um, I guess I'd like to see that itemized out on what, what you're looking at doing there. Because to me, that, you know, 566 is, I mean, that's a big number, but it doesn't really tell me a whole lot of what you really want to do there, other than you want to put, uh, concrete curb and gutter and parking lot.
Yeah, and I don't know, because like, there is an itemized cost breakdown that I did provide, and did that get included?
Yeah, it's, it's in there.
It's in there, it's your other page.
So basically, when you look at it, Dale, I mean, again, we have the gravel parking lot, we had curb and gutter, we had concrete sidewalk. Um, we did figure on that, uh, access road is just, um, that kind of goes through there right now, we figured, you know, probably like a just a two-inch Mill and Overlay on that. Um, you know, again, I, I provided a detailed itemized breakdown of how we come up with those costs.
Yeah, I, I, I do see that here. Um, and then I have one more question. Um, explain this, connecting people to the outdoors. What's that price for?
Yep. Um, so that is, of course, the, the way that we'll apply for this grant is through the Red Lake River Corridor Joint Powers Board, which is made up of six communities along the Red Lake River, Thiefera Falls, St. Hilaire, Red Lake Falls, Crookston, Fisher, and East Grand Forks. So all six of us are participating members in that Joint Powers Board. And each year when we apply, we apply jointly as a group, because that's, those are the communities that make up the, the water trail of the Red Lake River, which is deemed regionally significant. That's the way that we apply or can qualify to apply for this funding. Um, and one of the, the focuses of the commission that sees these applications, this year, they sent out a specific emphasis on wanting to see applications that quote, "connect people to the outdoors." That's one of their pillars or their strategies for, uh, their mission to accomplish each year. So we've been working as a Joint Powers Board. Each of those six communities been working, uh, for the last number of months to try to come up with a plan, all as a community, a group of communities together, of how we can work together to have, uh, river-specific events in each community, and it also market the Red Lake River Corridor as a, uh, recreation and tourism focal point for this region, to try to bring people to the area, engage new people in the river itself. Uh, and that's the, the project that the Joint Powers Board came up with as a piece of the application. So it's asking each community within the Joint Powers Board to, uh, apply or commit to a local share of that to meet the 25% requirement. And then if funding would be approved, all six of our communities through the Joint Powers Board would work together to create a marketing campaign, to create professional, um, photography of the river corridor that could be used to help promote. Uh, and then it would include two events each year that would be held in East Grand Forks, two in Crookston, two in Thiefera Falls, and so on, that would try to engage people in a new activity that they haven't experienced before on the river.
So, so it's basically an advertising tool, then?
A piece of it would be advertising, and a piece of it would be, would be the event part of it. Yeah. But again, that, where the basis of that is, is we feel like, uh, you know, if we're going to continue to receive or continue to attempt to receive funding from the Grants Commission that oversees this and makes recommendations, they specifically said, this is a point of emphasis this year. We want to see how you're going to, if we're going to give you this infrastructure and give you this, the, the money to help put this infrastructure in, we also want to see how you're going to use it and how you're going to get people engaged in using it. Because they don't want to commit funding to, to, uh, investments that aren't going to be used by the region.
Is there a wayfinding component to that, or is that?
Yeah, and, and a lot of that is in progress already through previous applications. We have some wayfinding that we're currently working on that, that's been funded in past projects. But that, that, especially the professional photography and the marketing piece, it would certainly be a part of it. Yep.
Anybody else have anything? I see none. Uh, roll call, please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
All.
Riappell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Claims consider authorizing city administrator clerk treasurer to issue payment of recommended bills and payroll.
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Vedder. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just noticed on the last check registry I went out, what was, what's the amount for the, that's going into trust, that 90,000?
I am not 100% sure. Carla, do you know?
I can answer that. That is part of an EDA loan for a, uh, business that is expanding. So it's actually for the Riverwalk loan. It's a loan for expanding. It's not part of the COVID emergency loans. It's an expansion loan that the EDA has given out.
Okay.
And Golsted, it runs through Golsted's trust.
Right. I figured it was just a trust, but yeah, I didn't understand what it was for. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? No. Roll call, please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mr. Vedder?
I don't have anything this week. Thank you.
Mr. Helms?
I have nothing, thanks.
Mr. Riappell?
Nothing.
Mr. Johnson?
I just wanted to thank Nancy and, uh, Jason for getting that crosswalk done over there by the swimming pool. Appreciate it. Sleep better now.
Mr. Demers?
Thanks. I just have one thing to thank you to, to, uh, Chief Bushy for his prompt response. I just have one thing to thank you to Chief Bushy for his prompt response. I had asked him for some information on the siren protocol when we were having a storm, and even amid all that was going on, he sent out a quick reply. But it brought up an idea that we should kind of let people know what those sirens mean. I know there was some, a little bit of confusion between East Grand Forks and Grand Forks because East Grand Forks sirens were going off, Grand Forks weren't, and it appears that it was due to a wind speed thing, and I think Grand Forks is at 100 miles an hour, and we're at 70, so just, I don't know if there's a good avenue that we can start, maybe on our website, we could put that kind of information on, what it means when the sirens go off. But thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, I do have one thing, just an update, I'm not sure if the council is aware or has heard, but the special session expired last night, I believe they adjourned around 2:00. They did not reach an agreement on the bonding bill yet. I did speak to the representatives about this, particularly how it relates to LGA. Their best guess is for us to just move forward with what the Lake of Minnesota City's recommendation or projections are on that, and they are not sure when we will be, when they will be done or finished up there. They are still quite divided on the parameters of the bonding bill and what should be included and what shouldn't be included, and who gets what. So I guess what I was hearing is that we could still have a long road ahead of us before there is a bonding bill. That's all I have.
Mr. Gaults?
I have nothing at this time, unless there's any questions for me.
Mr. Emery?
Just as a heads up for the council, we did, last week, we got the notice of intent for the potential quiet zone. We got that submitted to all the appropriate parties. So thank you, Megan, for your help in getting those out. There is a 60-day comment period, so I think the deadline for basically receiving any comments was September 15th. So I guess we're kind of just in a waiting period and see what the different agencies come back with.
Thank you, sir. Anything from department heads?
Yes, I have one thing, this is Jason. Just an update, the South End Ridge Study, hydraulic study, is almost complete. There's a draft out right now, and they will be coming to present that next week's work session.
Thank you, sir. Anything from department heads, other than Jason? I see none. They entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Move by Vetter.
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.